Hello, Kyle.
Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Jeff Finch.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you, Tina. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the meeting on February the 13th, 2018. You have had a chance to look at those. Do we have a motion to approve as written?
Motion to approve.
Have a second. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. There's no proclamations or recognition tonight. Item five is communications from the city administrator, James Fincham.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I think Vice Mayor Profit has some things he wants to take care of before I get into my part.
This won't take just a minute. A lot of times when any of us see something for depositing in the community, somebody doing something good, a good deed for somebody, or whatever, we try to recognize them. And there may be more people that's done this good deed, and I don't know about it, but there's four businesses that I know that's helped some needy people that sometimes struggling, having a hard time when they haven't... A lot of them didn't have anything to eat, a lot of them had nowhere to go. I'd just like to recognize the coffee shop downtown, they've been off for good. Debbie's Drive-In, Herman's Market over there, and Lois's Country Kitchen. I know those have helped a lot of people. And I just... I told each one of them personally, thanked them for what they've done for when people gets down sometimes in their luck, didn't have anything to eat. Just wanted to tell them thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. The first thing I have on my agenda, as most of you probably have noticed, the new traffic signal here outside on the corner is now operational. We had it blinking for about 10 days, letting everybody get used to it being there, and then it's fully operational now. We've had to do a little bit of tweaking on the timing. It had a sequence going, it had traffic going at odds, and as soon as we become aware of that, we got that fixed immediately. But we've been monitoring it. We've still got to put some signage up, and of course, we're going to put striping on the road when we get the new pavement down. And so, that project is almost completed out here that we did through the... that the state did for us. The property, at the last meeting, you all accepted a bid on the property over at Laser Street. That transaction has been concluded, and that gentleman is now the proud owner of that property, and he can move forward with any plans that he might have for it. And finally, just to break you a wire, Tina is winding up her budget meetings with the department heads, and now shortly, we will begin meeting with them, she and I together, for the last round of budget talks. And it is our goal to have a proposed budget to hand out to you at the next meeting in April, for you to have to look at, and then we would ask for a budget workshop for the first Tuesday in May, as is our tradition, to go over that and to try to finalize something we can have for discussion at the May meeting and try to have the first reading on it. But we are on schedule, and we hope to have that draft ready to come to you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Tina Always, for having that ready for us. We and James together worked hard, and I appreciate you.
And that's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, James. While you're on your report, just something I want to bring to council's attention and the citizens of our community here. I had a discussion last week with a business owner in downtown, very concerned with the alley area that's between the Old Squeeze Inn and where we have the animal control building, as well as the entrance there. Well, I always call it where Butcher and Barker used to be, behind Wema's. And there is, I think, probably some drug activity chief going on. You're probably already aware of that. There is people hanging out in that vicinity, they're trashing the area, and is Mark here? Yeah, there he is, right in front of me. Whatever we can do legally to block that off, I'd like for us to look at that. I think at one time, there was a gate up or something. Maybe that was against the fire code, or whatever, but we need to really look at that, Mark, and if you can come up with some kind of plan to where we can alleviate that problem for those business owners down there, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Well, one thing, Mayor, and we may have already saw a part of that. It came to our attention that the other building, the old sidewalk cafe down there that we also own, it came to our attention a couple of weeks ago that they had... someone had kicked in the back door, and we had squatters down there, I'm sure homeless that had taken up residency and even put up curtains, I think. But anyway, we went down and roustied them out, and we have secured the building where it's going to be pretty hard to kick the door back in again, and we've roustied them out of there, and I would guess that that is at least a part of that, because I'm sure that was probably these individuals that was involved in that, and they had, like I say, they had taken up residency in that abandoned building which we own. But we have put them out of there and secured the building. We even had one to come that wasn't there when we ran the rest of them off and secured the building and said he needed his bicycle back. So, we had to go down there and open the building up and let him... we was holding it hostage, so we let him get his bicycle. But we've run those folks out of there, and I would guess that that would probably have taken care of most of that problem. But we will look... we will kind of look into it and keep an eye on it.
Well, I know the Old Squeeze Inn joint that's there is grown up really bad, and I think there's broken windows, and I think that's a safety hazard. Is it possible we could talk to whoever the owner that is to maybe do something about that, because that's glass, and everything is a hazard to anybody?
Yeah, we have spoken to him in the past, and the last conversation he and I had about it, he said that he was strongly considering tearing it down, but he's taking no actions since then.
It's an eyesore, like a few other things, that I know Mark and others has worked on diligently to make our downtown look a lot better. Okay, thanks, James.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the next item is an appointment to the Beer Board, L.C. Gregg, who has indicated, I think, that he would like to remain on there. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And what's your pleasure, counsel?
I make the motion to reappoint him. He's done a good job. As long as his wife is healthy, he'd like to do it, or good enough to.
Yes, sir.
She not healthy.
Right. Do we have a motion to approve that reappointment?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Any other nominations or anything, maybe? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item seven, reports, one from Tanner Preservation Alliance. Anyone here that would need to speak on their behalf? Keep Cock County Beautiful?
We'll try to be as brief as possible here. We submitted our report, but with our report, we also wanted to come and share with you all our litter index report that we've conducted for this year, for the 2018 year. We get a group of three, four people, and we ride around in a van in different parts of the county, and we also did the city as well. And we look at how much litter is on the roadsides and on the sides of the street and stuff, and we score that on a scale of one to four, one being fairly clean, not too much litter there, and four being extremely littered. So, we just kind of wanted to come to you and share with you the overall county score, but then share with you Newport's, the roads that we were on in Newport, and some of the roads that are of a little bit of concern because they are so heavily littered. But our overall county score was a two point seven, which is an increase from last year. We've actually increased 22 percent in the amount of litter that we have on the roadsides. The litter is worse now than it was. And I think all of these were pretty much in city limits. Maybe Rock Hill Road's not, but it's right outside city limits, so anyways. We went on Voodoo Road, and we gave it an overall score between all of us was a 2.3. Hedrick Drive was 2.7. Morel Springs was a 2. Heritage Boulevard was a 3. Coke Boulevard was a 2.5. Jim Town Road was a 4. And we noticed, of course, did you pass in the picture? There's a picture there of some dump sites and stuff that were on Jim Town Road that's been cleaned up since, but it's heavily littered. Causeby Highway is a 3. Bailey was... Bailey Road was 2, or Bailey Street, I'm not sure. I just said Bailey. Whoops. That's a 2. Rock Hill Road was 4, and Old Ashpool Highway was a 3. So, the overall for Newport, we picked 10 roads in each district, so the 10 roads, 10 streets in Newport, the overall average was a 2.3. And we wanted to just come and share that with you, because March through May is our Great American Cleanup. And so, if there's any way that you can help us to encourage people to... because of the litter problems, not the sheriff's problem, it's not the police department's problem, it's not our problem. It's not our problem, it's not our... it's not our fault. It's the fault of the people who are throwing it out. So, if there's any way that you all can help us, you can think of ways that we can educate people to not throw their litter out. I've been going into the schools and trying to spread the words with the children, and if there's any way that you can help us encourage businesses to keep their areas clean, their business area clean, we would appreciate that. And then we also have a list of our Great American Cleanup events. We have one coming up very soon, March 24th, at Douglas Lake. April 21st is a Spring Clean Your Home event from 9:00 to 1:00 at Lowe's. We're going to take household hazardous waste, we're going to take electronics, anything you want to get rid of that day, we will take it and dispose of it for you. April 28th, we have a Foothills Parkway pickup at 10 o'clock, and on June 3rd is the Pigeon River Cleanup in Hartford. So, if you know people who would like to volunteer, we'll take all the volunteers that we can get on that. We appreciate y'all's support in everything that we do.
I always like to tell Dave Birdall, I think he's back there somewhere, he might be saying that... I'll say I miss you, Dave, but I'm sorry. We sit outside behind Rock Stokken, I couldn't see. But anyway, if it wasn't for him, and a lot of... we'd found the wrong field in this camp, and I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you.
Get him a bigger truck, that would do.
Thank you, girl.
Saw a lot of it.
Right.
Get him a bigger truck.
Thank you, girl.
We appreciate you. Thank you all very much. Okay, moving on to item eight, Old Business. Item A is the consideration of the second reading of ordinance 2018-01. Can you read that for us?
Yes, sir. I will read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's consideration of second reading of ordinance 2018-01, amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title VII, Fire Protection and Fireworks, Chapter 3, Fire Code Section 7-301, Fire Code's adoption, replacing Section 6104.2 Petroleum Gas Usage.
Do we have a motion to approve on the second reading?
I think I might.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. Hear none. Item B is consideration of the second reading, ordinance 2018-03.
And that's an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the City of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2017-2018.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I think that motion to approve is written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item C, consideration of the second reading for ordinance 2018-04.
And Mayor, that's an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the City of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2017-2018 for Newport Grammar School.
Do we have a motion to approve on second reading?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any no's? I hear none. Item D, consideration of the second reading of ordinance 2018-05.
And that's an ordinance granting a franchise to the Newport Utilities Commission to build, construct, operate, and maintain a cable television system in the City of Newport, Tennessee, and setting forth conditions accompanying the granting of this franchise.
Do we have a motion to approve on the second reading?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Under New Business, item A is consideration of first reading of ordinance 2018-06, that's amending the zoning ordinance residential district adding uses allowed as special exceptions by approval of the Board of Zoning and Appeals. Do we have a motion to approve on the first reading?
Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item B is consideration of resolution 2018-03, adopting the Cock County Regional Tenure Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item C, consideration of waiving the application fee for a special events beer permit for the chamber. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Item D, consideration of certificate of support for a senior center facility located at 225 Coke Boulevard. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Discussion of Animal Shelter Funding.
Mayor, at the last meeting, there was some discussion about the situation between the city and Friends of the Animal Shelter, the Humane Society, and Vice Mayor Profit asked that I speak individually with each of the council members, also with you. You weren't able to be here, and to try to get a feel for what the consensus was on what the council wanted to do moving forward with this situation. I spoke with each of you as I was directed to do. There was some difference of opinion on how to move forward with it, but at the end, the mayor made the recommendation that we give $2,000 a month to the Humane Society, and in return for that, what we would expect is for them to accept animals from city residents who've come by out there and want to drop animals off, and also in the event that we have any surplus animals at our facility downtown. So far, we've handled our... been able to handle the flow of animals in, and... but in the event, and we would continue to try to do that, but in the event that we got overrun, we would take the surplus out there. And all that we would expect in return basically would be for them to provide that service, and we would like a copy of their budget and a quarterly financial report. And so, that's pretty much the gist of what I... in conversations with each one of the members, that was the consensus that everyone seemed to come to on what they wanted to do.
Okay, let me kind of... you and I kind of done a little texting concerning the budget amount.
Yes, sir.
And Ann had asked me for that, and I think your... what your quote was on last year's budget when we were scheduled to be a part of the Friends of the Animal Shelter.
Correct.
Which was $244,000, but the number is what?
181.
181.
It's for animals.
So, I wanted to set that, because I didn't have the right information in order to...
Well, that... yes, well, that is what was budgeted.
Right.
When we did the budget at this time last year, we were operating under the assumption that we would still be at the old facility, and so, we cut the budget from the prior year. The prior year, the budget was over $400,000, and that was what started the contention, was that we cut the budget. And so, the number I gave you, 244, or whatever it was, I've got it here, that was what we budgeted for the old facility. And so, what was actually wanting to be known was what we were projecting to spend downtown, and so, that was 181.
Right. And of course, my suggestion of the $2,000, you know, if we're already budgeted $170-some thousand to run our own facility, which is working well, from all indications that I've got, I guess where I come up with the $2,000 figure, that's $24,000 a year, like a donation to them. I figured that would be a fire figure, since we only give the Boys and Girls Club $10,000 a year, and the Newport Rescue Squad $10,000 a year, and Douglas, I don't know what that figure is, but I figured that would be a starting point for you maybe to discuss with the council members to see.
Well, and, you know, to some's credit, some wanted to give less than that. There were a couple that wanted to... were recommending $1,000 a month, but they agreed with your number. So, it wasn't like you brought the number down.
Right.
I mean, there was some feeling to want to go with less. But one thing that I want to make sure that gets on the record is that with every one of y'all that I talked to, the one thing, the recurring theme between everybody was that each county taxpayer, each city property owner is a county taxpayer. And so, $100,000 of their money is already being spent through the camp, and now they're asked to turn around and an additional amount of money coming out of their same pocket through the city revenue source, and that was a big concern for each of you. And so, I think that is something that gets lost in the mix sometimes when we look at going in with the county and doing a project that, you know, every... not every resident, but every property owner in town pays county taxes the same as every county property owner. And I think that gets lost in the mix a lot, because people say, well, let the city take care of it, let the city take care of it. Well, what are they getting for their county tax money? Because, you know, I've had to point that out more than once in some of the negotiations on other topics, where there's monies involved, that the county pays monies, and they want the city to come in and say, pay their fire share. Well, amen, you know, if you're a property owner in town, you're paying your fire share already. So, I do... you know, that was... everyone expressed that belief, and so, I think that played a big role in coming in with a lesser amount than what was originally discussed, $100,000. I know that, you know, there was some folks upset that we weren't going to stick to that number, but I just... I feel like everybody feels like that they are looking out for the city taxpayers, and I commend you for that. I think that that gets lost a lot of times in the mix.
One of the two discussions that I had with Ann Fontaine concerning this, and one of them is about the budgeted amount, and then the next discussion, maybe both discussions, I don't remember, but I told her $2,000 was the figure that was being tossed around, and the first indication was they didn't want the $2,000. And then the second indication said they would take the $2,000 a month, but they wouldn't service any city animals, so, you know...
That's not acceptable, not according to what everybody has told me.
So, I mean, are we... is this on the agenda to vote on?
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Hansel said that he wanted on the agenda this time, that he wanted, it's time to bring this to a head.
Okay, let's let counsel, if y'all want to discuss the information you've heard so far and comment on it.
Well, my understanding is that it's not... we're not just going to give them $24,000 a year and say, you don't have to do anything for us. That is not what everybody... now, they may change their mind, but that's not what everybody's told me.
Do you think it's appropriate to review this memorandum of understanding at this time?
Well, I mean, Mr. Brandon, when I talked to him, and I explained to him what everybody was going to do, I explained to him what we were going to expect, what the amount was, and what we were going to expect for the money. And at first, he told me the same thing that the mayor was telling, they would turn it down. And I said, well, it's basically, it's a take it or leave it off. And so, my advice would be, if they don't want to take it, then that'd be the end of it and move on.
Well, who would be an authority with the Humane Society, the Friends of the Animal Shelter, to officially make that recommendation?
Well, whoever would have to sign that memorandum would be the same one that would have signed the contract they wanted to sign that they...
Yeah. We know who's in charge.
Could I respond to some of this?
Not yet.
Not yet.
That's up to them, not me.
It would be the presiding officer of the Humane Society, Friends, the Friends of the Animal Shelter.
Who would that be?
Karen Helm.
Karen Helm.
Is Karen Helm here?
No, she's not. She has no meaning, but...
Okay. So, what is your pleasure? Do y'all...
My two cents were at the end, if you don't care.
Yeah, that's what we're...
You know, Mr. Brandon, I don't know, you know, I know that Karen is officially supposedly in charge, but, you know, I think Mr. Brandon thinks he's in charge, and other people think they're in charge. Now, Mr. Brandon said publicly twice at CLB meetings that they don't need our money. And after seeing a recent financial spreadsheet from a CLB member, you folks, I commend you guys, you're up and running, and you're working for what this spreadsheet said, a 30% operating profit. That's what the number said. I'm not making up numbers. I'm also excited at our facility. Do I want it to stay down there forever? Heavens, no. That's the reason why I consider it a temporary facility. And right now, last month, you know, we have on hand right now 18 animals, five dogs and 13 cats. And from what I know after talking to some people in charge, that that place is running very efficiently. And those numbers, you know, there's another lady here in town that's got a relationship up and running with another rollover rescue, and, you know, we had 16% adopted out last month, we had 6% rescued, and 6% returned to owner. You know, there was accusations we'd had overflow of 400 or 500 animals before we knew it. For three months or four months this place has been open, it's been running very efficiently into a T. And Coach Profit's best buddy, one of his best buddies in life, Coach Profit's got a bunch of best buddies. Coach Ken Sparks taught me a long time ago, if you don't stand up for something, you'll fall for anything. And I was the one that started this, and I truly believe the numbers speak for themselves. The folks at the Animal Shelter and Humane Society should be very happy that we've got a place for our animals that is... they're being taken care of the way animals should be taken care of. Is it small? Yes. Heard last month, all the cats in there are stressed because they're too much... too close to dogs. I don't know if I've got stuff like that. But, you know, the numbers speak for themselves. We've been spending $400,000 for X amount of years, and even with a donation to the... $2,000 a month suggested donation to the Animal Shelter, we're going to be saving right at $200,000 a month. Now, the numbers speak for themselves. Everybody should be happy that we're taking care of it a year, I'm sorry, a year, and all the animals are taken care of properly. I commend these folks for doing their job with the budget they've got, and the money we've got to run ours. I commend the folks that are doing that as well.
I do, too. I commend you all. I've been out there, I've seen proof what you made, so that's not the problem. I appreciate what y'all do, too. I want you to know that.
So, I'm ready to move forward.
So, actually, what we need... we can't officially do anything until there's an agreement signed by the Humane Society that they're going to allow...
Well, you can approve our side, that this is our offer.
Okay.
You can vote to make this offer, put this offer on the table, and then it'll be up to them to accept it or reject it. So, that was... I mean, I would, me personally, in dealing with this for five years, I would like to see if this is the consensus you all have, that what you want to offer, take it or leave it, to make the offer and put it on the table, and then the ball is in their court, and they can take it or leave it.
Okay. Let's put this on the floor for a motion to approve this.
I think our main job is to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dogs.
Right.
And we're trying to do that. We're also trying to provide a tax decrease, so there's going to be less monies to go around. We're all going to have to tighten our belts for a while, but I think this is a generous offer, and I think we should run it.
Do we have a motion to approve this memorandum, as James mentioned, during citizens' comments?
We have no recourse to give our side.
You, you'll have to get them to go along and sign this contract, is what we're voting on. That's on the floor for a motion. Do we have a motion to approve it?
I make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any other discussion from council?
And Mayor, just to make sure the record's clear, the motion is to pay to the Animal Shelter at the rate of $2,000 per month, conditioned upon this memorandum of understanding that James and I both prepared is approved by the Friends of the Animals.
Okay. All those in favor, indicate and saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposes, no? I hear none. Okay. The item 10 is consideration of bids for a 22-ton equipment trailer for the street department.
Ma'am, you're interrupting the meeting.
I don't, I don't care. This is not fair.
This is the way the meeting is operated. Well, there will be a time for you to comment at citizens' comments.
After the, after the vote has already been taken?
Yes.
Well, what does that do?
Just be seated, please. Ben?
Yes. With the street department, we've been needing a flatbed trailer to transport some of our equipment that we have, have our heavier equipment, when we have to take it to Knoxville and get it repaired. And I've been looking online to see if I could find one, and I found one on the NJPA quote. And we have the money, I already budgeted in my budget to get this with. And you'll see in your package that it's $16,784.
Do we have a motion to approve, that's your recommendation?
Yes, that's my recommendation, that we accept this trailer.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Row calm, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
You're, you're welcome, Ben. Citizens' comments. Anyone have comments?
Ben, thank you all, and step out there for what y'all do, too.
Yes, absolutely. April, did you raise your hand, huh? Okay. Five minutes.
April, before you get started, I want to thank you for helping getting this rolling rescue back in operation.
Yeah, and I appreciate, they're not here tonight because she was at work, but you didn't mention it, and I'm pretty sure Lisa appreciates it, that Stillway has stepped in and come back in and bonded a relationship back with the city to where they can help rescue downtown, because they realize that it's not working at the shelter. That's one thing I wanted to do, is let everybody know that it is Stillway Rescue helping the city. And I know at one time, everybody wasn't getting along, but I think now everybody's trying to come back together for the animals. And then the second thing, everybody knows that I was in it from the get-go, and it was all about the animals and everything, but me and Jeff, you know, we've had words, but Jeff got the same numbers I've got. And two things I wanted to call attention to. First, Jeff, thank you for letting everybody know that currently, the numbers that they are giving, if they are correct, they are operating at a 30% profit, therefore, they're on good financial standings, so they'll be able to do it with what they're doing with the county. And second thing, I know it's about taxpayer money and city taxpayer money, so I know that you've used due diligence in the numbers that's been given you, and I want to point out, and I'm pretty sure Jeff noticed, that there is no donations. What I had told you about, and the reason the second treasurer resigned, is because we had talked about, when a nonprofit runs, they have to tell everyone, especially when they give government money of their donations. You cannot keep two separate books. If you're running an animal shelter, you have to run an animal shelter included in your nonprofit. You can't keep a separate book for donations and use them how you want. And I think that's where James had the original problem with the Friends, when I told you they would need financial help, because you can't just use donations how you want to and then tell how you've used them. You have to put them in your, on an item, a line item, and you have to use them accordingly, especially when you get public money or ask for public money. You have to spend those donations accordingly, and you have to record them and on these financial statements. Since they've been up and running, there is no donations whatsoever, and I know that I know they've received over $9,000, and it's not accounted for anywhere on here. That's why, even though I am for the animal shelter, I know we need an animal shelter, I do have to commend Jeff on due diligence of city taxpayer money, because technically we don't know how it's being spent. And in the, in the end, whether you fund them or not, you have to know how money's being spent, or they have to be accountable for the money being spent. And still to this day, we need an animal shelter, but I'll stand on my words that I've told Jeff and I've said social media publicly, they will not be able to do it on their own. If they do, I will commend them, but as far as giving them any of my more taxpayer money until they get more organized, I think it is best, because the city doesn't actually need them, need them right now, just to stay backed off and away from it, because of just the financial numbers, they're not adding up. And I've seen them, and I know them, and I know both treasurers, and I know they're not adding up. And the numbers you see here were given to one of the CLB candidates, and he actually just transferred numbers onto paper that they gave him, so nobody's actually seen the books to see. These are not financial statements that they made on their own, they didn't know how to make them on their own, and somebody stepped in and made them for them. So to tell you at this point right now, they still need some kind of financial responsibility.
Thanks, April. Any other comments from citizens?
Lucas, can I need to see you after this minute?
Last time for comments. Yes, go ahead.
No, he's busy.
Okay, go ahead. Five minutes.
Like your board meeting out at Utility. My name is John Thacker. Newport Utility installed my electric service to my house improperly because it did water in it in January of December 16. I brought it to their attention, they came out, I mean, Jan, December of 16, January of 17, they came out, found it, admitted to it, and agreed to repair it, $2,500 repair. Their insurance company offered me $2,500 if I take a check and sign off that I was satisfied. I would not until it was done. All right, then nobody come, nobody show up. I do not have a meter at my house where the power runs through it, so I cannot pull a meter and turn the power off to my house. It has donuts. The power's hooked straight to the transformer, I'm depending on them to kill the power. And I went to the board meeting because nobody came for over a month. And they agreed that they would come out and take care of it. January, no. February, no. March, no. Then I heard that, I made Mr. Glenn Ray mad because I went to the board meeting, and he was not going to come, so he felt like coming. In April, the whole electric system in my house shorted out and blew up. It cost now, right at $20,000 to repair the damage it was done to make. They agreed to fix it, turned it over to the insurance company. The insurance company offered $4,500 and said they done paid out enough for Newport Utilities, and they wasn't paying anymore. And y'all may have mentioned a while ago that they're to make money and all this good stuff. I sat in their board meeting, and they wrote a check for the manager that worked 30 days for $750,000. I talked to a board member, and it said it cost the utility and the town, what was it, over $3 million for the hiring and firing of Glenn Ray. Where is money coming from? You know? My electric bill's gone up $100 a month, and I can prove it by the usage. But back to my little situation, I was told to bring you the bill because the city owns the electric company. And I understand from my gathering so far, I thought it'd be a simple matter of taking it to court. Now, gentlemen, I don't like to take people to court, but they wouldn't pay it after they agreed to pay it and be responsible. But my attorney, Bill LaRox, politely informed me after checking into it, you can't sue them. You can't sue a utility unless a judge approves. Judge wouldn't approve. If you do sue them, you can't have a jury trial, and same judge hears the case, and the most you can ever get, $750,000. I'm only asking for 20, because that's the damage that they did. So I guess, main reasons I'm here, do y'all have any idea what's going on with Newport Utilities? What happens out there? I've talked to current board members and past board members out there. They say it operates like a bank, borrows unreal millions of dollars and then pays it back almost right away. What's going on? What is happening out of that place? And I understand from talking to the mayor that, no, don't know what's going on. And then the settlement reached with Mr. Ray, he gets a $30,000 a year raise, and I understood he quit. He wasn't fired, he failed to show up for two board reviews, and then quit on the third one. Had a hearing, and all of a sudden, the manager's in high cotton. Y'all paid out millions of dollars for that pheasant. And I wanted, went out and I asked for some budget information, which is supposed to be public. I am a utility customer, couldn't get nothing, absolutely nothing. So to y'all, as the owner of the utility, give me the financial record of how much was paid to Mr. Ray within his settlement, what he wound up getting after everything was settled, and then where was the money paid for? The insurance company says they weren't paying anymore. The utility wrote the one man a check for $750,000 while I was at the meeting, and I noticed when I went to the meeting, they were feasting like kings. They must have fed 25 or more people that day, had it personally taken.
Your time's up, sir. Thank you. Clay, do you have something?
We are here to talk to, to address you guys tonight about a particular matter involving a nonprofit that I'm associated with, which is the Newport Theater Guild. Recently, we had, you all probably are aware of the fact that we are in the process of selling our building that we've had here to enable for another business to come to downtown Newport, which was good. And in that particular process, we had some, we had some different things in mind, and we were, we're addressing with that particular property owner, as well as some of the other organizations downtown, we were going to come to you guys and talk about potentially working on another project that is dear to our heart, that will help not only our organization, but a variety of organizations in town, and that's the auditorium renovation project. You all are aware, this year Cock County High School is celebrating 100 years, and in the, in the process of that, we're looking to do work with a situation where we're going to overhaul our auditorium. There are some, I don't want to say snafus, because I think the project is going to move forward, but there is, I mean, it's initially had a price tag of about $2.5 million. As you're aware of, from a school system standpoint, they were really willing to step up and to kind of make that particular matter happen. This was all six months ago, a year ago, as we've worked through the process. Recently, within the last month or so, you're aware of the fact that there are some new issues facing the school system. One of them, we just dealt with yesterday on the county legislative body, is the fact that we're looking to try to be able to put armed police officers in every school in Cock County, which means that's a, that's an additional, half a million dollars, just roughly. So the ability to be able to take care of this particular project is now somewhat, it's not in question, it's going to continue to move forward, but there are some questions about the, the ability to put forth with that. I think Greta has some, some information to kind of share with you about some of the organizations that this particular project would help, and we're asking for you guys to see if you have more money in your particular budget to help out these other organizations that are.
What I have here, and I'll just give this to you for you to look at here on time there, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Letters of support from individuals representing several organizations, just to remind you all that it's not just Cock County High School that uses the auditorium, but there are dance and NASTICS groups in our area that serve our local youth, the Tennessee Pinnacle Association, which brings a lot of traffic and income into our county every two years, just with several other various groups and organizations, local business owners and stuff that support the project. And just want you to, even when you're considering this, to keep in mind that the main reason to help improve our auditorium is to better serve our youth in extracurricular activities that are already available and would be able to use that space in a way that's going to help them to grow as individuals and become successful on, I might give Suzanne just a couple of minutes to maybe mention some names of some folks from Cock County that through Theater Guild and these projects have bettered their lives.
We see so many children in Cock County that end up pregnant at an early age and on drugs. We would like to offer children in this county and city some things to do and to thrive in. We've got Luke Grooms, who has performed at the Metropolitan, he's an opera singer in New York. Freddie James, who is an executive on HGTV. We've got Mike Butler, who runs a radio station. And all of these are kids who have been involved with the Newport Theater Guild in technical or in acting. Jordan Woods Robinson, who is on The Walking Dead, Homeland series, and is a member of the Blue Man Group. Stephanie Barnes, she's a makeup artist, and she works on the television series The Blind Spot. Sabrina Crowder, who has gone to school and she works in New York City in costume, and she was just hired to do work with archiving a photo shoot for a famous photographer that just passed away. There are lots of music teachers in our school system currently that have been involved in Newport Theater Guild. Luke Hefner, who's done quite well as a singing star. And also the Arts Capes kids that have gone through Newport Theater Guild and are now running the nonprofit for Arts Capes. We, we just feel like we need a place to perform now. We don't have that, and we would like to ask for money to go to funding this project so we can give our children something to create their self-esteem and look forward to something, and be able to come back here and give.
And then, like a lot of the other entities, we're not looking for an ongoing situation where we're going to be getting so much money each year, we're kind of looking for just like that. What we hope it would be a relatively sizable donation for one time to help out with our particular process. I know that Nancy Bali is here as well, and she's got, I mean, if you have any questions about just the project itself, I mean, I think all of y'all are familiar, I think you, maybe we're at our 100th day, you probably know about that. You probably also know about the need that we have for such a, for said facility in the community. We just don't really have one of those. Whenever this is finished, 650 seats, you know, handicap accessibility stage, we just don't have the capabilities to do that anywhere in Cock County right now. And that's, and, and that was a big part, whenever we were developing like the plans for this, that was a big part of the drive, is having something that's countywide.
So you're, you're looking, the city just for a one-time?
One-time donation.
So we could, we could consider that maybe when we start our budget for this year?
That's up to y'all.
Would y'all want to?
Yes.
To kind of look at that when we have the budget talks and stuff, so?
Okay. And I guess at that point, if you, if you have more questions of us, if you have more questions of me, feel free to contact us. I mean, we can talk with y'all individually, however that works.
Team and MC makes the call we're at.
Right. Yeah. Once we see kind of what, and you don't have that on there.
I do, I do, unfortunately.
Yeah.
All right, okay. Thank you, guys.
Great. Thank you, guys. Any other comments from citizens? Yes?
I've got one quick question. What should we do about injured animals after hours, like after five o'clock Friday through the weekend? I got a call a couple of weeks ago on Saturday, lady had a broken, the lady had a cavity broke, lady, she asked the lady what to do about it. I had no idea, I had to call April. Tried to call the city animal shelter, there's no answer. It rings busy. The county animal shelter, there's no answer. Is there any way we can get some kind of, something set up of where there's assistance over the weekend for animals?
The protocol for that is to call central dispatch, they have the on-call number for the animal control officer who's on-call. We always have an officer on-call over the weekend, and the, the dispatch would call the on-call officer, and they would come in and deal with that.
If I need enough.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Anybody else?
Here, Bob, Mr. Keglotters here. I know I come in this a little bit late. Were we going to have any discussion?
He's already got it.
Okay. I'm sorry. Sorry I was late.
You're good, that's okay.
School, school needs help.
We have a motion adjourned.
I'll make a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Anybody folks here?